House, I love it. Next thing we have on the agenda is our nepotism policy. Everybody have the revised draft? Pretty much what the intent here is everything in black is the original and everything in the red is the only additions to the policy. This is the same thing that was sent out a while ago. I knew that there was some people that had some trepidation. So definitely be open to hearing any conversation or comments or concerns.
The intent was not only with the situation we're in now, but going forward. Because of election law, there's really not a way to keep people off the board who have children or immediate family that work in the district. So it's a conversation about potentially down the road too, if this should become two, three, four, five people. What sort of protections do we want to have in place? And the lawyers suggested the language in red. The two bullet points. Specifically, the board member would recuse themselves from dealing directly or indirectly with anything affecting the employment of the employee who is the relative. And anything to do with the collective bargaining process or decision making that might impact the immediate family member. Just formally having potentially in the, excuse me, in the policy, a couple of carve outs to help address that original concern of conflict of interest. So we would certainly be open to other thoughts and ideas. And from you folks as well in the audience.
What would the board member be able to not recuse themselves of?
Certainly, anything to do with facilities, anything to do with curriculum, anything to do with, I'm just trying to think off the top of my head, anything that's not directly related to their relative. So anything
Facilities primarily.
Financial or anything that would be, that would impact their employment.
Alright, so by state law, it's only a spouse, right? That can't be.
Correct. Correct.
So what happens if the board faces that we have multiple members in this predicament and then they all have to recuse themselves? We'd be a pretty inactive board.
That's one of the concerns.
Why don't we just align with state law? And then if it's a direct conflict of interest that directly impacts the employee.
I think what she just, and the first thing that comes to mind with me is the budget committee. If we, let's say we had seven people, seven or eight, you know, set up a quorum of people who had a family interest, you know, with a son, daughter, whatever. Those people probably shouldn't be on the budget committee.
Right, it would take moving around on
Yeah.
And then, and then budget, but then negotiations?
Then, yeah, the negotiations committee as well, you know, so those, those things. If, if we, if you, and again, in the, it's hard to get good teachers, it's hard to get people for the school board, so you could, oh, once again, what ifs, but you could end up with a situation where you have a fair number of board people with.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, this is Dexter. Everyone's related to everybody in that aspect or another, so I think if you're trying to.
This board just followed state law for years and years and years.
Well, how did that work out?
It, I think it worked fine. In two thousand seventeen, there was a group of board members that were hearing in the community that there was issues with conflict of interest and things like that, so the school board at that time stepped forward and wanted a nepotism policy. It wasn't an unanimous vote, but it was enough to pass, obviously. So this policy was driven by board members who were worried about that potential look of a conflict of interest. So, but prior to that, we just followed state law.
If we just followed state law, we wouldn't even need, really need this policy, would we? Because we didn't have any kind of nepotism policy in this district prior to twenty seventeen.
Correct.
I think that it's pertinent though to keep it as an immediate family situation because it is a conflict of interest to be voting on the money that your brother or sister or daughter makes. Domestic partners even in here. It's a vast conflict of interest and I, I mean, generally speaking, you're gonna wanna do what's best for your child or sibling.
I think the key here, we have to understand is that this is a nepotism policy and nepotism, the definition of nepotism would be a direct reporting. And I think that the nepotism is important, however, what, what gets confused is the conflict of interest. And we have separate conflict of interest policies that actually would cover anybody having any kind of a conflict of interest in certain situations, so if someone had a, you know, a family member that was in food services, that person would recuse themselves based on the conflict of interest. The concern is that we're getting these two policies mixed up and they're two separate, two separate things.
Conflict and nepotism is not something.
That's right, so.
Well, the definition is actually the practice among those with power or influence of favoring relatives, friends, or associates, especially by giving them jobs.
Right, but, but nobody on the board would have the opportunity to give a job. That's Kevin's position. So they would have to vote, excuse me, they would have to vote, like, I mean, it would have to be a voting situation and at that time, then that person would recuse themselves underneath the conflict of interest policy, not the nepotism policy.
Has that situation arose?
Budgets.
Excuse me?
It would also include budgets under definition.
Well, there is that possibility, but when you're looking at a budget situation, and this is my opinion, but if you're looking at a budget situation, you're looking at voting on a budget that encompasses a whole group. There's not a direct correlation to the one employee. Nepotism is directly related to one employee receiving favor. Now, if the person decided that they, you know, they felt like in their heart or felt like there was a conflict of interest or other board members felt like there was a conflict of interest, I think it would arise at that time. But there are so many situations that we've encountered even up to this point with possible conflicts of interest and nepotisms that we haven't really seen as an issue with the board. And so I, I think that you just have to look at, they're two separate policies and that's what has to be looked at.
Is it possible that you haven't seen it as an issue on the board because in the past, people who have been in violation of the nepotism policy haven't run for the board?
Well, I think that we already, according to the nepotism policy, as I understand, you understand it, we already have several nepotism issues in the district that are not, are not addressed and not, because people don't feel like there is that same conflict of interest or they feel like there's the opportunity for that person to be impartial. And so that would be a board decision at that point.
But again. What we wanna do is build a framework so that the outside public looking in, you know, make it as transparent as possible.
I love transparency.
Right, we all should, but if there is a issue, we would like to have it as a policy on paper so that way there's a framework to deal with it.
You already do, which is the conflict of interest policy. It's not nepotism, that's I think the difference.
But this is nepotism by definition.
Nepotism is one person giving favor to their specific relative. As I understand.
Yes.
That's open to interpretation.
Yeah.
If your mom is voting for you, that could be giving special reverence.
But you only have one vote on a board of.
Correct, but it's still a vote.
I, I have some too. I have one right here.
What's that under?
The conflict of interest is.
Or conflict of interest policy.
Right there, I was just seeing.
I, I'm curious, has the board ever had to vote for a budget increase where a spouse or relative has worked for that department? So for example, is there, we'll call it the athletics department, have they ever voted for something for the athletics department where their spouse was a director or a coach or any sort of situation like that? Cause to me, that could be a conflict of interest.
Under state law, a spouse is, a board member's spouse cannot be employed by the district. That is state law. That they, if the, if the board, on, if there's a school board member, so that could not, should not, could not have happened because then we would have violated state law by having that board member and that person.
That's like the original nepotism. We're just trying to add on to it.
Okay.
That way, if other circumstances come up, we know how to handle it.
Yep.
Especially in the future. Because essentially, if you get voted in by the public, there's really not much you can do other than figure out how to navigate your role within the board to not have anything look like a conflict of interest or nepotism, or to show favoritism one way or the other. Optics are pretty important.
Yeah, and that's what I was, the appearance of improprieties is what I was, what I was.
I believe optics is important, but I think that that a lot of times is resolved when you have an elected official. Most of the time, people know whether or not they have relatives working in the district and that would be up to them whether or not they chose to vote and elected, elect them in. This proposed policy, you know, it, it really ties the hands of any board member that has any kind of relationship within the school district. And I, I agree with, I agree with optics. I'm all about transparency. That's, that's key. I just think that we're looking at the wrong policy and if you go under the conflict of interest policy, it gives you the idea of what, what actually would be considered conflicts of interest. And as far as budget, there's always the opportunity, if we felt like there was an issue, we could do line item voting if we had to and then exclude the person from voting on that particular line item, if that's really something that people felt like it was an issue.
This does specify immediate family.
On?
On the nepotism policy.
What?
You were saying that they would have to recuse themselves if they were voting on anything for knowing anybody in the district. And I have seen people, for example, recuse themselves when we were hiring Mr. Gendrow because they knew him personally, but this specifies immediate family. It doesn't, you were saying that.
Right, but the state law doesn't say immediate family. The state law only requires you to be, to be a spouse issue. The conflict of interest would come in with immediate family. That's when you switch over to the conflict of interest.
I just find it really interesting that you want more policies for everything, but then when, but this you don't want to be part of the policy.
Is that personal? I mean, I, I thought we were talking about facts here.
We are.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I've seen you ask for policies, I mean, that are completely unnecessary, but you don't want this particular policy.
So supervision and evaluation, it says no person shall be employed or assigned to a position that is within administrative supervision. That's the only thing I think that has anything to do with immediate family within this policy. So do you guys think that we should put this into the conflict of interest and not the nepotism? Cause regardless, we need to have some framework.
Alicia, what part of the board member conflict of interest policy do you think applies in this situation?
Well, let's look at it. I haven't done as much studying in that, so I apologize for that. Let me go.
The main gist of this policy is a board member who runs a business, has a office label to the district.
Right.
That's the main gist of this. And maybe something could fit. Most of it deals with profit. Or, or employment position.
Right, which that is conflict of interest if there is some sort of a personal gain. And the thing is, that's what makes it different from the nepotism, because the nepotism puts somebody in a position to give strict favor to their family member. And so, and I understand why people like to lump it together. It's just not, it's not exactly accurate. Because, for example, in this situation, you know, the board member would not be able to employ their, their daughter or their aunt or their uncle or however, whatever, however immediate family you want. The board member doesn't have that decision. That really relies, lies with you, Kevin, as far as the hiring and firing and administrative purposes. It doesn't.
Except teachers and administrators.
Excuse me?
Except teachers and administrators. The board approves those.
The contracts?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. But again, I mean, that's, we're talking about support services.
Right, well, I think that's kind of what, yeah, that's what we're trying to get at.
If we, if we look at the Maine State School Management Policy Book, they really recommend sticking with the, I can get it. I have it for you. I believe.
The MSMBA and the lawyers recommend two separate policies. But they're not, they're not required. The nepotism policy is not a required policy for districts.
Right.
It's an optional policy. Like I said, we went years and years and years and we didn't have.
The conflict of interest policy that you're discussing, is that, you said that that covers?
Has a lot to do with a board member.
Not necessarily the family. It doesn't, it doesn't delve into the family aspect. It's just the profitability of being a board member and using that.
For instance, if they were a contractor and we had a roofing project, say.
Excuse.
And would that, the school bought t-shirts from my husband.
Okay.
That would be a conflict of interest.
Right.
Right.
Does that cover a conflict of interest if a school board member employs another school board member?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, no.
There's a trillion other types of conflicts of interest that have not been defined. One way or the other.
Kevin, I actually have a, hopefully this is helpful, that I have the MSMBA handbook here. And they have a more extensive conflict of interest policy, I think, than ours. Which maybe that's what we need to consider to help eliminate this situation. Their nepotism policy, the first part, the employment and the supervision, it is the same. And then they do allow for the exception in extraordinary circumstances on the immediate family down below, that, but they have it as optional.
Yep.
And so,
Right.
You know, I wonder if maybe we're looking at the wrong policy. I don't know.
See if it all might fit under the.
Conflict of interest.
Yep.
Cause this conflict of interest seems a little bit more, because it has to do with appointment of office, appearance of conflict of interest, employment, board members as volunteers, definitions, and this is right from the Maine State School Board Handbook as well.
Yep. When the board approved this nepotism policy, they wanted to see the nepotism policies from any districts around us that had nepotism policies. So they built their policy off what there was around us.
Um, I, and I have.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, that's just how they did it.
Yeah, I've looked at a couple of them and they all had the basic. But I, so maybe I just didn't hit the right one that they looked at that was different. I mean, I think I looked at RSU nineteen and I looked at Dover and they had the basics.
So what do you guys think about putting this potentially into the conflict of interest instead of the nepotism?
I, I could, I could see keeping both of them myself, but as, as long as what we decide we need to have on paper.
Right, it's somewhere.
It's somewhere, I mean, melding the two would be the worst thing in the world.
No, I agree. Andrew, what do you think?
I think it'd be easier to follow the state law as far as nepotism. If we've never had an issue in the past, we're going that way and then maybe taking a look at the conflict of interests and seeing
Putting it in there somewhere.
What we could do with that.
Dream.
I think as long as we have the framework that the board member would need to recuse themselves, it doesn't matter to me if it's under nepotism or conflict of interest, as long as we have something that the board employees in the community.
And the school board members as well.
I think if you put it under the nepotism like this, it's very, I mean, the board member's not gonna be able to do anything. Really. But I think it depends on.
I don't, I don't see that.
I think you have to, you have to know what the legal definition of nepotism is too. Like, what are we, what are we basing our nepotism policy off?
I've spoken recently with some people who were instrumental on the school board passing the nepotism policy back in two thousand seventeen and they were disappointed that this is back on the table. They put it in place for a reason. They worked hard on it. And.
The nepotism policy is not going anywhere. We're just.
Seeing where we should add this.
Right, what are you thinking of?
Um, I think that the wording for me is a little weird, I guess. And I think if it wasn't due to the current board member, it might be a little bit easier because people aren't as emotionally charged about it. But honestly, I think the wording overall is fine, but again, is it a nepotism issue or a conflict of interest?
So it's just a matter of where you wanna put it?
Right.
Andrea?
I, I think that this wording is great and, but I'm also conflicted of which policy does it need to go under conflict of interest or nepotism or both? But I think, I think the wording is, is good and important, but looking, that's why I had Mr. Knox pull up the, the conflict of interest policy again because I couldn't, and I was pretty sure that that was more vague in referring to the relationships than it is. I mean, it talks about the the board member and spouse, like state law, that's it. It doesn't involve any other family members, but I think it's important to have this language addressed perhaps in both places.
What do you think about just putting it in conflict of interest to start, just to get in there? That work for you guys?
Would you guys consider looking at the conflict of interest that the Maine State Board Association has and then?
I do. I think, I think that should be the next policy committee meeting because I do think we need to take time to look at other versions of the conflict of interest policy. There, there may be, there may be language already in that.
That we can use.
That works.
And just to add to it a little bit, I kind of think that it's more like a subcommittee issue than it is an actual, like, full board issue. So like where the, where the family member is going to be best suited. So that they don't have to recuse themselves from multiple votes or feeling like they're not doing the job that they're supposed to be doing for their community.
But that works when we only have one board member.
Right.
But if you end up with four or five board members that have conflict of interest or we can just hope that that never.
That's what we're hoping for, but we can't guarantee it now.
Well, is there a way to avoid this from happening again?
Yeah, I know.
Is there a way to avoid this from happening repeatedly?
No, not unless the, either the town or the state law changes.
Yeah, people are, people are allowed to run.
Right.
Right.
Yep. We've had several teachers say that they're gonna have their parents run it the next time the seat opens up.
I just feel like the town really.
It may be something we have to deal with down the road too.
Like banked on the concept that people would do the right thing by not intentionally violating the district policies.
And that's, that's different to everybody though. Everybody's opinions and the way they look at it is very, very different.
So are we going
So right now we're.
By the state?
Uh, the nepotism, I don't, I, I think we're just gonna revert back to the original.
I think at this point, well, then I may be wrong. I think we get resources around current conflict of interest policies and have that be an agenda item at the next meeting and see whether we wanna put the two together or whether we wanna just go with none at all or.
It should be two separate. It's, to me, it's two different.
Yep, and maybe, and maybe that's what the group, that's, maybe that's what the group decides.
So right now, we'll just leave the nepotism the way it is.
I think we have time, we, we need time to look at other versions of conflict of interest, our policy, but also versions like Alicia's talking about to give us more information. That's just my opinion.
If you guys find those before the next meeting.
Yep, email them.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Our current conflict of interest policy is BBFA. But I will find some other versions and mail those out to you guys.
Moving on.
Good discussion.
Um, we'll do the Title IX.
So quick backup information. The Title, Title IX law came into effect in this country in nineteen seventy-two. There were no rules and regulations that went into law until two thousand twenty. And then the Biden administration updated the rules and regulations. We have addressed that update in our policies. Now we have to revert back to the rules and regulations of two thousand and twenty. So what I did, and hopefully it's not confusing, if it is, I apologize. What is in yellow are the things that were added by the Biden administration. And what's crossed out is what was crossed out by the Biden administration.
So yellow equals Biden, crossed out equals Trump.
Correct.
Think of it that way.
So what we're required to do is flip-flop those. In other words, all the yellow gets deleted. And what's crossed out goes back into the policy. So you'll see in the second paragraph when it talks about gender identity or expression. The Biden administration took out "or" expression and went much more detailed sex stereotypes, sex characters, pregnancy-related conditions.
So.
And so all of the yellow needs to come back out of the policy. And where it's, where it has a line through, that goes back into the policy. I hope it's not too confusing. I thought like the easiest way to see what was added and what we have to go back to.
So wasn't, wasn't gender identity added by the Biden administration and then told to go back? Cause that wasn't in the twenty twenty policies, was it, for Title IX?
Gender identity was.
It was.
Correct, yep.
I know you just made this whole policy over your pregnant students as well. Would this negate your pregnancy policies?
As of right now, the guidance is no, but the reference in the affirmative action policy, we need to come back to. Because it was not listed under the twenty twenty version
Okay.
of the rules and regulations. Any other questions on AC? Any other questions on ACA?
I guess I just have one very point-blank question.
Yeah, what's up?
Does that mean that you will be, um, reverting back to the pre-Biden administration and adhering to Title IX as?
The rules and regulations of Title IX, yes. Correct. So, policy ACA, if you look at the top, it was harassment and sexual harassment of students. The Biden administration separated those out, but that will go back in, so this becomes harassment and sexual harassment of students again. The, the strike through or expression again goes back into ACA. The yellows come out. Down in A, under harassment, same thing, the yellow will be deleted. Everything with a line through it goes back in.
So you've got gender identities in the first paragraph but stricken in the second one?
Um, where I, uh?
Uh, well, the very first paragraph, gender identity is not crossed out, expression is. And then under harassment, gender identity and expression are both crossed out.
Yeah, I'll have to double check. Those are-
She's getting the others.
The cross-out is supposed to be what's going back into the policy.
Correct.
That's, that's the twenty version.
I think what she's getting.
Consistent with, it should be consistent with the first paragraph, but I see what you're saying.
Okay.
Yep.
But that, that is supposed to be in, that's in the twenty twenty version. Under B, sexual harassment, that all comes out, the yellow. At the sexual harassment, other forms of sex-based harassment.
Okay.
The sex-based harassment comes out. Under Se-, Title IX, sexual harassment, again, the sex-based language. The more specific language around sexual orientation, pregnancy, again, that language will come out. The language at the top of the page goes back in. Well, that's what the Biden administration did, but it's being added back in now. All, all they did is they split it into two different. Do you remember when we get, when we get to our procedures? We have procedures for R1 and R2 as the latest version. That was harassment and sexual harassment. It's all going back together now, based on the twenty twenty rules. Hang on, so you know, quid pro quo. Again, the Biden administration separated them out, so they removed sexual harassment. Sexual harassment goes back in. And all of the yellow comes back out. Again, they split harassment and sexual harassment. And you'll see in, in the second paragraph, it talks about ACA, R2. Well, that's being eliminated, it's back to ACA, R like it was before. The definition, hostile environment, at the bottom of that paragraph goes back in. Sex that a regional person who determined is so severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, so forth, that language goes back in. The Biden administration added defined and applicable and added reg-, regulations. That's being removed, it goes back to defined in federal law, period. The next page under reports and complaints of harassment or sexual harassment, again.
Yeah.
The yellow comes out. The words sexual harassment goes back in. The second paragraph under that, sexual harassment goes back in. So that they can be appropriately addressed is removed. And then the additional language, again, about the reports and the reporting ACA, R1 is all being removed. And it goes back to the general language below that, all reports and complaints of harassment or sexual harassment, where the lines go through that, that all comes back.
So Kevin, for clarification, um, these policies though, they included the Maine Human Rights Act language, right? So they actually, just for clarity, so they actually don't abide by all of the Title IX rules? Can you answer that or not? I don't know the, I, I, I'm-
They, they abide by Title IX and the Maine Human Rights Act.
And both, okay.
Correct.
And so there was nothing in the Maine Human Rights Act that, um, Title IX negated? Do you know what I'm saying? So like, uh, so obviously we all know the, the whole elephant in the room is this Title IX battle we're having with our state and we're looking at state funding issues. Um, I just, I just wanna know, are we in a position to say that we are abiding, abiding by the Title IX that's been set forth by the federal administration? Or are we abiding by Title IX, the federal administration, and then in addition, the Maine human rights? Does that make sense? I don't know.
At, at this point, we're abiding by both.
Okay, so would federal say that we are out of line from federal? Because you know, we've got this battle and it's not fun because we're-
What the executive order says is we're out of Title IX compliance because we let transgender athletes play sports in Maine.
Okay.
Title IX federal law doesn't say anything about transgenders playing sports.
Right, but-
So that's kind of one of the rules.
And obviously, we can't change, but you know, the, the flip side would be, but an executive order has come down. So I, I, I'm not trying to argue that. I don't wanna get into that part of the politics.
That's all gonna be decided in courts.
Right, but I, but I guess my concern for the school is to make sure that we're not gonna lose out on funding because of what's happening with the governor and the president and him deciding, you know, not to, to release those funds. Where are, and, and, and I don't know that you can, you can change it tonight. I just, I'm just wondering where we're at to make sure that we're in position to get funding if we need to get funding.
Right. I, I obviously can't answer that. I don't think that's gonna be answered except in the courts.
Okay.
Um, there's, people have all sorts of signs to it.
I know.
Um, what's right and what's wrong, I don't know. I think if we step out on a limb either way, we're at risk of losing funding.
Okay.
If we're violating state law, we get about eleven million dollars from the state. We get about a million dollars from the federal government.
Right.
So
I see.
I'm hearing this is probably going to be taken care of in this legislative session right now.
Okay.
But it has not as of yet.
Yeah. I just wondered where we were at, so like if people said, hey, we're gonna lose our funding, I have a response to be like, I don't think they're gonna, because we're here, you know, I, I-
You gotta bill in to amend.
Correct. And I think that's where it's gonna, that's where I think it's gonna take place.
We're stuck, we're stuck between a rock and a hard-
Yes.
Unmoveable.
I, I-
Until such- Until such time as it is negotiated via, via the legal process.
Right.
And that's where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
That's it.
I just wanna make sure I know where we're at, like, so I can respond appropriately to people when I ask.
Our legislators from both sides of the aisle have pushed back and said, the feds just can't arbitrarily withhold funding.
Right.
Who knows whether that has any power or not? I don't know. I, there's disagreements all over the place.
Yeah.
Um, there's a couple places where they withhold funds, but
Then they have to-
In the next couple days, they changed their mind and they go, oh, no, we'll give it all back.
Right, right. Right. No, I agree. I just wanna make sure that we do our best to put the district in the best possible situation.
Yep.
Whatever that looks like. I don't know what that looks like. I just-
I think, my personal opinion, I think we continue to follow both laws like we have for the past-
Since twenty twenty, right?
Right.
Okay.
And in, in every school district in the state that I'm aware of is doing the same thing and just saying at this point, you people above us need to make a decision and tell us which way to go.
Right.
Cause we, we will, we'll follow the law, obviously.
Yeah.
And I, can I just add-
Did you see the Attorney General Frey's letter?
Um-
Oh, Aaron Frey?
I don't think I saw it.
He had sent a letter to-
We will not comply.
Where the USTA?
Yeah, US-
Just that he, like-
I think it was a DOJ.
Title IX, what did he say? Title IX does not, um, say specifically transgender, so that's why we're not-
And it doesn't. That's one of the issues.
Right.
That's one of the rules.
I agree, but if, so that gives a pretty clear picture of where the majority party, like, I don't think they're going to amend the Maine Human Rights Act.
Well, there's no-
It's just gonna keep being neither side is gonna back down.
There's no disagreement from either party that's not addressed in Title IX. That's, it's not.
But in nineteen seventy, when Title IX was written, this was not-
Correct.
A mainstream issue.
It was about females.
It was about protecting biological females.
Based on biological sex, right?
Absolutely.
Why not revert to its original intention of protecting females? And why not do it on a local level before, you know, why not set the example?
We, we have to follow the state law. We can't pass a policy that goes against the state law. So whatever the state says is the law right now, we have to follow, or we'll be breaking the state law.
And that, and that would be true for any school district in the state of Maine.
Correct.
It does not make us special. We have to follow state and federal law.
But you also have to protect the students.
To the best of our ability, and in this particular case, the only solution is to wait and see what happens. Likely, we're not in a situation where we need to worry about it, cause we don't have any students that, students that fit that criteria. Thank God.
Yes.
Yet.
Well, there's always a yet, no matter what you're talking about. So we're kind of in a rock and hard place.
Unfortunately, we get put in positions-
All the time.
There are laws that we don't necessarily agree with, but I would hate to put this board and these taxpayers in a position where we're putting eleven million dollars of state money at risk either. You know what I mean?
And that is the breakdown? It's one million from federal and eleven?
It's, it's a little over one million, and this year, it's about eleven point three million from the state. And varies a little-
That's important information for us to be able to communicate to the community as to why we're making additions.
Consequences is defined in a situation like this.
Yeah.
Can I add something before?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what Alicia had said about answering the community is Kevin's job to answer the community. Us as a board, we don't answer things privately. If they have questions, they need to ask Kevin, or they need to come to a meeting. None of us should be-
I'm not sure I agree with that. I think that our job is if, if, if a member of the community has a-
Orientation taught us that we do not speak as a board outside of
The board meeting.
The board meeting.
Right, as a board, but we still have our rights as people, and if we have information that we have the ability to share that.
The other thing is, we have a, uh, policy development, policy BF. And it very clearly states, the policies are framed and meant to be interpreted in terms of state statute, rules of the state board of education, all other regulatory agencies within our local, county, state, and federal levels of government.
Mm-hmm.
So doesn't clarify anything for us.
Oh.
We can follow all of them.
Right.
We each follow.
We need to be compliant with everybody, whether they're- There are a lot of hits.
I think we move forward with, as soon as this is solved-
Is that an order?
It's, it's a policy. It's by, by policy.
But, but is it in order of which?
Uh, I don't believe there's any, any order to it.
Okay.
It says all.
Yeah, main being listed first. I don't think that matters, unfortunately.
I'm in hopes it's gonna be solved.
We're hoping.
Soon.
Once there's some clarity.
There's some clarity to that. So that's ACA.
I'd say it's just like made to follow. It's a legal federally, legal state that chooses to follow state law.
Yeah, I mean, if the feds wanted to crack down on us, like, let's just satisfy, it's just, that's kind of a risk.
I don't need one.
I'm just like, if that budget passes, it doesn't come in here.
No. It doesn't matter which way you go.
Right.
You've got constituents that- So, we just talked about ACA. The procedure that goes with it is ACA, R. If you remember on the board about, whatever it was a few months ago, isn't too long ago. We split ACA into R1 and R2. R1 was harassment, R2 was sexual harassment. All they're doing is they're jumbling that all back together and going to just R, which is the way it was before. So you have about eighteen pages of procedure. And the only pieces that are going back in on page one or expression.
Going back in or coming out?
Going in. Uh, excuse me, coming out.
Coming out.
Coming out, I'm sorry.
What? This is no- You just said.
The rest of the procedure stays just the same.
Yeah, we did, we literally just did this.
Because they split them apart.
Right.
But now it's all back together.
Right.
So within this is going to be harassment and sexual harassment of students.
Then there's gonna be for teachers too, right?
And then the teacher is exactly what's coming next.
So Kevin, on the second page where it said "or" under number five, or-
Yep.
Are they putting like "and" or?
Maybe a, maybe a, maybe a apostrophe.
Or a comma?
They're gonna separate it somehow.
Yeah, we'll check on that. It's probably gonna be a comma.
Probably a comma, using my guess. Spike?
So then you have to take this word.
All the words.
So we just talked about students. ACA, B, and then AC, V, A, ACA, V, R is about employees. So this is now employees. Again, the key is around sex stereotypes, sex characteristics. Those pieces are coming out. Similar to the last one, down under harassment, the old definition is going back in. Unwelcome offensive conduct, that yellow language is coming out. Again, you'll see the reference to sex-based is being removed.
So Kevin,
Yep.
Um, since we're just reverting back to the twenty twenty policies, do we actually need to go through the policy or just rescind the ones that had taken their place?
We're not going back to twenty twenty policies, we're going back to twenty twenty rules and regulations of Title IX. But there's also the human rights component in these as well.
Right, but the human rights component was within these twenty twenty?
Unless there were updates to the human rights. And, and it may not have been. I'd have to go back and look at that.
It looks like there are four separate updates and revisions.
Again,
Yep.
Again, what's, what's crossed out is coming back. Which yellow is being removed. Again, the hostile environment refers to ACABR2, which is gone, that doesn't exist anymore, or won't exist. Applicable regulations, that goes away. Down on two, it was switched to under main law, main goes away, another federal law comes back. Again, that definition of unwelcome goes away.
So we're taking main law, main.
In that place. Yep, in that, harassment of school employees.
Well, it says, it says sexual harassment under main law at the top, right next to number two, so main is in there.
But then under. Yeah, taking main law, yeah, but then Title A and under main law regulation.
It's just where, where it was, where it is.
Just main law is the lyrics, it's in a different.
Um, the next page, down in the C, the word substantially interfering, substantially comes out. And it goes back to unreasonably. I don't know the differences there. Uh, under reports and complaints, the word strongly was added to the first sentence, so that's coming back out in yellow. And again, in the last paragraph, the reference to ACABR1 and R2 go away. The R1s and R2s that were reapproved as a board are now gone, and they just put them all back into one. Which is defined in the next sentence, that's crossed out, and it comes back.
I'm already one behind.
Yeah, a couple more trees, all kinds of trees. Well, yeah, when the pendulum swings the other way.
Yeah.
Hang on to the other ones, guys.
Save the district some money, but so we don't have to copy these.
Yep.
So ACABR, this procedure is sexual harassment complaint for employees. And again, this has just the first two or three pages. The or expression. And the rest is. All the same as it was. So those are the policies and procedures. The five that we're required to update or. Whatever column, column backwards is.
Yes. All right, last on the agenda is the policy DVD, and it's the start time of our monthly meetings. Looking to start it at six o'clock instead of seven. There was a couple people that were against it in the other meeting, um, but the majority were not, so looking to start our meetings at six. And then the committees and the monthlies would all be the same. So what do you guys think?
I would, I would be in favor of changing the start clock. You start, you start at seven and issues come up, the next thing you know, it's ten o'clock, ten, eleven o'clock, and that's, that's getting kind of late.
Andrea? Andrea?
I, I could go first.
I think that would make it harder for, or would it make it harder for community members that work that want to come?
It's once a month.
Right. It's one, it's once a month, and based on seeing parents showing up for middle school basketball games at three o'clock in the afternoon. Yeah, if, if, if there's, if there's, if there's an issue, there's an issue that's, that's really important to somebody, they would be there with the meetings at, at six o'clock, seven o'clock, or whenever. I, I don't think six o'clock is too, too early.
Now, and that'll get us home earlier at night, especially with executive sessions and long, long meetings, which will take up more often than not now.
Seventy years, but it's.
Yeah. Thank you, Heather. We'll propose it to the full board at the next monthly meeting.
So, is this group at the point with policies, and we can take them separately? And this start time, is there a majority of this committee that's gonna pass this on to the board? Cause remember, we don't make any decisions here, it's just a recommendation to the board.
The board recommends?
So the nepotism, that issue's not going back over right now, right?
We gotta dig into the, we gotta dig into the conflict of interest policy.
I think the other half right there though.
For a first reading, not action, for a first reading.
So all those in favor of presenting, first, first readings? Hands down opposed? Hands up?
Says it's time to go.
I mean, it really is. I think we're done, aren't we?
Luckily, it's not winter.
So yeah, be on the lookout for emails.
These thick ones take a while. Who needs this?
I don't need a coffee.
Yeah, I'll pull, I'll pull some, the MSMA. Yeah, yes, yes. I intentionally did it so it's.
Let them see, like, comparative.
I mean, we can do it, we can do it that way, so we can, we can send out the whole packet with the agenda with the revisions, and then we can also hand out the, what we guys.
See the difference between the two.
I agree. It's definitely easier to navigate that way.
We always are yellow adding words.
Right.
So maybe we do it differently, because this now needs a little bit of help.
So do it, right.
I think a clean policy though is helpful, because then the people get to see exactly what the policy's gonna be.
You're right.
The, the yellow and stuff, it, it, like you said, it gets confusing, and then you, you're trying to wrap your brain around it, but if it's a clean policy, that's what we should actually be voting on.
It's good to see the difference, but like, for the read.
For the head, if you have the clean.
If someone's confused, they're not gonna know.
Right.
Hand out both.
But then you see what's been changed.
Right. Thank you, everybody for coming.
Hey, mine, one last tree, you can, I'll keep mine, you don't have to send, give me a hard copy.
I think they're probably just gonna be on the desks waiting for everybody when we show up anyway.
Oh, okay.
Well, what I'll, what I'll probably do is send a clean copy, the packets, but then have the other packets at the meeting.
Yep.
Otherwise, the package, the package is gonna be all free itself.
Yeah, yeah.
Job, you're hired. No. Me and the photocopier, we're not getting along. Thank you. I break it over time. I break it to my administrative assistant. Oh, gosh.